Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the roll call.
Bert?
Here.
Eric?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Graffy?
Here.
T.O.
West?
Present.
All present. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, we're going to close session, I need a motion.
A move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, so we are in closed session. It started and, so, the items which we discussed in the closed session, and item number one. Need a motion?
I'll defer.
That's it.
Okay.
Turn my 27th.
Yes.
One second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just for public information, we have a retreat of the committee, the whole, and the plan commission on January 27th, and that's the motion to defer to that Saturday morning retreat for further discussion.
Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. So the, what's the motion?
It's not a motion.
Okay, but, aye, so, we got the item number two, board line settlement agreement.
Will we defer?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to defer the board line settlement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So the next item is the comments from the city and present, it's limited to three minutes per speaker, so if anybody wants to speak, identify yourself and go to the mic. And you have thirty minutes.
Three minutes, five, three seconds. Van, not Middleton, Chamber of Commerce, history.
(laughing).
Big bad.
You're grown there, Ikey.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to give a really quick reminder that Around Town with John McGivern will be doing their premiere show at the Performing Arts Center at the high school at seven o'clock on January 22nd. The doors will open at six o'clock, there'll be entertainment from some Middleton High School band or orchestra folks, and the show itself will air, have its initial airing on January 25th at seven o'clock on PBS. So January 22nd, PAC, seven o'clock, if you're not in a committee meeting. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Van. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment part of the city council, and the next one, it's, it is 7:25, right? Okay, so the next one is the public hearing, the common ground Middleton LLC, and they are requesting a Class B pre-mature bar beverage, mark, pre-mature marked beverage, and a Class B intoxicating liquor license. Anyone who wants to speak, either in favor or against of this? Anybody wants to speak? All right, there are no speaker, I'm going to close this part of the public hearing. And then we go to the presentation, which is the release of the mining that the Dane County housing crisis, this video for seven minutes.
(inaudible)
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 Give us a second. Okay, all, I'm going to, all of them favor the motion to pass the common conference minutes with that modification, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Are we ready, or?
No.
No, okay. Alright, so the next one is the, under the agreements number one, approval of the 2018 Mad City Pond Arti Agreement.
Blue approval is recommended by PRC.
Any discussion?
Just, uh, point of clarification, Mark. The one that we passed out tonight was not before PRC, so I think it'd be...
Right.
It's approved by Finance.
Okay. So the motion is to approve this Mad City Pond Arti Agreement as approved by the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes and I'm off to the next. Bill, are we ready, or?
No.
Oh, okay.
Can we defer that to the sixteenth, is that something that we need to see tonight?
No.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I could get into Internet, I think that's the problem.
Okay, alright, so the next item is under contracts, item number one, Task Order with Strand and Associates for Design and Engineering Services for the Pleasant View Bi-Park Trailhead Parking and Access Drive.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance. There were a couple stipulations with Finance to approve this, but then to require a comprehensive plan prior to any other expenditure of money on this, on these development projects out there.
Okay, any discussion? All of those in favor of this motion with Strand and Associates with the modifications, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes, seven one. Now we're on to the ordinances, this is the first reading, the final action may be taken upon approval of motion to suspend rules under section 1.07 of Milton General ordinances. And number one is the ordinance to man section 3.12 relating to emergency alarm license 7.142, the N O P.
I move approval was recommended by LNO in suspending the, uh, rules.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have a quick question, it wasn't clear from the information in my packet what exactly an emergency alarm license gives people, or who uses it. Can somebody in one or two sentences tell me what this is?
Home alarm system. Come into the police department and people have to have a license in order to have that service.
Great, and they pay that every year then?
Great.
Perfect, thank you for that.
Modest price.
Great.
So Chief, there's a different part of the business, right?
For the businesses?
Yeah, is it the same, or is it different?
Uh, I think it's the same price.
Okay.
Chief, could you say that all on the microphone?
Emergency alarm licenses for, uh, private residences and commercial businesses that have alarms, they have to be licensed in the city of Milton, so that we know where to go and who to call and who their emergency contacts are and so on. So this is just a modest price to give to that.
Fantastic, thank you.
Sorry.
And if I remember correctly from LNO, it's also an attempt to get everyone electronically filing.
Yeah, we're encouraging that.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
So, Bill, could I ask you one question? Was this fee increase contemplated in the revenue plan?
Uh, unless police bill today, I would say probably not.
Could you give us an estimate on what this would be?
Chief, do you know how many are there? Okay. So how much is it?
You want to vote on the ordinance first?
Yeah, I don't know. No, he was going to tell that how much.
Oh.
Okay, well, alright, so we are voting on this ordinance, and all those in favor of this ordinance say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes.
No.
So are we done with that, or? We are not going with that video, right?
You have the video of the bike, or are you ready?
Oh, you're ready, okay, alright, so we're going to see the video now, so.
There's just not enough to go around, and they have waiting for us very long. You just can't afford anything more expensive, so we're here.
So the housing gap is the difference between the amount of income that people earn, and therefore the house that they afford, and the number of units that are available at that place.
I lived in Milton first, and that wasn't low income, so that's why I moved. If I was living back where I used to live, it would be three floors from my source. And I was, I was, I was, I was, I was. It's not like the older young people that are looking for a home haven't worked their lives, not for workers, they have worked, and they just don't have the money now to buy their own. And just look around, when you go up the store, you go out to one, look around and see how many older women have, it's growing fast, and we've got to do it.
Most low-income households are working households, and they don't earn enough to have a decent quality place to live, where they can raise their family, and in a safe and stable neighborhood.
So we've been together for eleven years, I worked for Jersey Mike's out in Milton, I'm the assistant manager.
And I'm working very well. We've noticed in the last twenty years that in many places across the country, housing costs have gone up much faster than people's incomes, and that puts pressure on their ability to spend money for other things.
It took us a long time to find someplace that was affordable, that was nice, we didn't have a car before. I mean, everything we did was by cab, by walking, or, you know, trying to get rides from people.
Apartment typically is, is affordable, uh, with saving a lot of money, staying here because they take care of the property. We want to be here, save us a lot of money, and where we're able to afford daycare for our son.
Well, did you like that?
We're able to afford food, believe it or not, food's expensive, so we're able to keep food in the refrigerator, we're able to go to work, here gives us reassurance that we're good, we're safe, we're feeling like a family.
We're really talking not just about making, uh, stable housing for families, but it helps to strengthen neighborhoods, and strengthen our schools, and stabilize our employment base. Having employees that can live closer to the plant is a big benefit to us. We know there's a gap in the community for affordable housing, so we're working on, uh, projects, uh, in conjunction with businesses, and again, the city of Sumperry provide affordable workforce housing. So workforce housing is really housing that is priced to meet the needs of the workforce that you have in an area. Tight labor market kind of forces us as a company to look outside of our general area, and, uh, it's difficult to recruit employees to want to come to work here at our plant and have to have eight, forty, forty-five minutes to an hour commute. I believe if workforce housing is not available, it increases the turnover rate. For many households who live far away from work, they may feel like they're saving money on their housing, but they're really spending a lot of time, gas, and travel, and it means that if their car breaks down, either they have to pay for their car or pay for their rent. So they might lose their job, or they might lose their house. When we have developers building new apartments that are affordable, it creates construction jobs, it creates additional jobs as people spend their money in the community. The city of Milton had a workforce housing committee that said we want two hundred ninety-five units of affordable housing over a certain time period. Having that roadmap is key for developers to know what the communities are, so they can bring the projects forward that the community is already asking for. I think the economic impact is huge, that we took a vacant bowling alley on two acres and built a sixteen million dollar project. The city recognizes this increase in taxes while at the same time providing units at this huge range of affordability. The Metropolis, Milton has seventy-six out of ninety-five units that are affordable, ranging in income levels from thirty percent to sixty percent of the area median. We've got units targeted for veterans, we've got units targeted for people with disabilities requiring support services. You know, these projects really throw a wide diverse net for a tenant base, which really creates, I think, personally, a better apartment. You don't look at this building and say, hey, let's got a new affordable housing project, and this is as nice as any market rate housing project. To fix the housing gap, we need a sustained partnership across all sectors. So for employers, that can mean helping the communities to find housing, for cities, it can mean spending money or helping to approve more, uh, apartment construction or development of affordable housing, and really for the banking and financial sector, it means financing to funding these projects.
This is the best apartment that we've had.
It's like our only private little community where you're getting to know your neighbors, so you can actually look out for your neighbors too.
I have a sign that says everyone needs a little place to call home. And it's like, we don't ask for management, we just ask for a little place to have.
Well, thank you, Bill. Alright, so the, we're on to planning and zoning. So the first item is the concept plan for director, acres, building, which, four eight two one, County Bureau.
I will start with the best information.
Give us a second. So, no, second.
I'll make a motion that we approve Concept Two.
Give us a second.
Okay.
Okay, discussion.
Would this require another, it's not our one, it's, would this be a P D D?
P D D.
These are the asked.
Yes, Robert.
Does it have to be, how many is this, fifteen, sixteen? I mean, I will say that I much prefer Concept Two, but I do feel like the eight households crammed into that one strip off to the right of the map just seem cramped, and I'm just wondering, is there any chance that it could be six, as in Concept One over there, which means two, two fewer houses? Sorry, Susan, it looks like you want to answer my question or ask another one.
Just to give you a piece of information, in terms of the lots being narrow. Those are the mid-size to the larger size of Milton Hills. We have lots from twenty-four feet width up to sixty-four.
And this is forty-two, right?
What?
I think it was forty-one.
This is forty-one.
Susan, correct me if, if I'm wrong though, but don't the households in Milton Hills have that back alleyway that gives them access to, uh, a garage typically?
Yes, that it does.
And I don't know that I see anything so far yet that shows access to the back of the households that would allow, so this thing would be, basically be eight houses with nothing but garage facing the street.
Yep, that is true.
Well, it's just a concept, I don't think they, they haven't submitted any renderings of other.
And that's fair.
Developers here and can comment.
So you want to, Mark, you want to say something else?
Well, there was a comment made that I could, thought I could help answer, and that was, um, under option two, uh, there are lots eight through fifteen, the ones that are joined Highway Q, would be forty-one feet wide, and that would not be allowed as an R one zone, uh, set of lots, so that would require a P D D zone. At least for that portion of the development, the others along, uh, the backside of, south of Northlake, lots one through seven appear to meet the minimum lot width in area dimensional requirements of R one two. So either the whole thing would be P D D, or a portion would be R one and a portion would be, uh, P D D, my guess is the whole thing would be P D D.
Okay. You want to answer some other questions, sir? Yeah, go ahead, identify yourself and, uh...
My name is Chris Cook with Chris Cook Homes, and I'm working with Bill on the development, um, to address lots eight through fifteen. What we would intend to do would be very similar to what was done over at Cranes Nest in Miski Valley, condo-sized homes where the garage is out ahead of the house, uh, so we, you know, by utilizing setbacks, we only have so much room and pretty much have to have two-car garage, so, um, I had submitted at one point early on what those homes would look like. Drove around Lily Lane if anyone would want to go and take a look at them, but it's, we did a really nice job of, you know, having to work with a garage that's out front to really beautify it, and it was a very popular concept with retirees, empty nesters, people like that. So that's what we would have to do on eight through fifteen.
Could you explain what the storm sewer easement is?
Seeing it?
There's a thirty-foot storm sewer easement, could you explain where it's carrying water from?
That's a lot forty-five.
Or next to lot eight?
Oh.
Yeah.
That's, I think, I'm going to have Bill come up, but I believe that's to help for some of the runoff that would come from up the hillways and what they're asking me to do with that.
Yeah, that thirty-foot storm, the reason is to carry the water that currently comes onto the property, and to, um, flow it through the side yard of lot eight, and then it'll go through the backyard of one through seven.
Okay, so it'll be carrying water basically eventually to Pheasant Branch Creek?
No, we're planning on having our own retention pond on site.
Oh, okay.
Just not shown on the, on Concept Two, shown on Concept One.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions to the, do I follow or the builder? Yes.
Do you foresee any of this, especially the eight fifteen being at all workforce housing, or is this...
It's possible, but not likely, I mean, given what I'm seeing as a builder, between all the new codes, all the things we have to do to make homes hurricane-proof, tornado-proof, sub-zero-proof, it's driving the price of housing through the roof. There's also a major, uh, shortage in labor, and it's all over the country, and it's, you know, between land costs, the different things we have to do, it just drives price up, and unfortunately, it makes that out of reach. Something we would like to do, be able to do, but it's, that gap, what we just saw, is getting big, and it's getting big because there are so few trained people, the people that are any good are within ten years of retirement, they are charging an absolute premium, when they're gone, what you saw here is the tip of the iceberg. I wish I could say there would be, but, yeah, weird. That word crisis should have been capitalized, bolded, and four hundred lines under it, because it's going to get, it's going to get bad for people. And I think, uh, I don't know if this is the form to do it, but we can get kids, young people in the trades, there's so much work to be had, there should not, I mean, there's work everywhere to be had, and nobody wants to do it because it doesn't pay enough. And if we're going to pay more, this is all going to cost more, so it's something, kind of be socially responsible, try to help put that, but we'd love to, but it'd be pretty tough to do.
Okay, any other questions, or did you have, did anyone? Okay.
I guess I do have one last question, and I know this is still just Concept, but in Concept Two with these, uh, houses eight through fifteen, um, on forty-one foot wide lots, uh, would those, because they're, I assume smaller houses on somewhat smaller lots, would that then fit under the definition of workforce housing? No.
It's a kind of...
It's a kind of...
Okay.
Do you have a, a, a range of price point that those would be at? Do you have an idea of, not at this point?
At this point, it's hard, it's hard to say, we're going to have to look at what our infrastructure costs are, what, what it's going to cost to make water and sewer and electrical and everything, work on all this with what we finally land with, engineering for the stormwater, then we can start having an idea of where our lot costs will be, and then that'll help dictate what the home prices will be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The motion is to approve the option number two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, seven one.
Thank you.
So the next one is the specific implementation plan and design review for Barb Davis Inspired Early Child Learning Center on eight five two one Arkon Road. It is in Tana Westport.
Second.
Okay, any questions? It is a really wonderful development there. Looks really good. Yes, everybody.
Plan Commission, I did not, was not able to attend this meeting, I just wanted to ask, um, the signage and all of that was approved?
No.
No. No, okay. It feels very much like a ranch, I don't...
The signage will be approved in a later date, along with the finalization of the scheme.
And are you asking for this to be approved by a specific, like, the joint committee?
And the, the joint committee and the town, uh, the Milton of Fort, Territory Committee, the Milton Plan Commission, the Town Plan Commission, and the Town Board have all approved it, and the Town Board, uh, well, the Town Plan Commission and the Town Board's resolution for any of your packets, so approved per their condition, and I also gave you, uh, in your boxes today, an email from Tom Wilson where he was asking the city to approve it.
Okay, so the motion is to approve, as, uh, Hallie mentioned, various approved by the Town Board, Town Plan Commission, and the Milton Plan Commission. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, seven one. So the next one is specific implementation plan for state for sale apartments, J K Klein and Company, so...
Apple approval, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Yes, Jacob. Um, so I was reading through my packet here, and I was pleased to see that you've been working on stormwater management with, um, can I pull it up badly? Wade, Wade, yes, Wade?
Yes.
Wade, um, could you just allow me a little bit more on, on what you guys are doing there, and how it's gonna, in terms of the bio-retention and all of that, please?
I don't know if I, I don't know if I understand what, what you're asking.
Um, well, it appeared that on December sixth, in the Milton Water Resources Management Commission, um, they're, they had talked about how, this is part of this, you'll be allowing a bio-retention basin is designed, um, to better fulfill the needs of the Stormwater Management Conservancy, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think Wade's working with Gary, um...
Gary Hughes.
Ove.
Yeah, Gary Hughes, uh, regarding trying, since you guys are buying the land next door, to try and, you know, work together to maximize some of that area between the two, so that we're not completely separate systems, and so that we're wasting space or whatever.
Not wasting.
Yeah, not wasting, second.
Okay, any other questions, uh, Jacob? You have something to say, Mark?
Yeah, like, we brought, at, at Plan Commission, one of the comments they had was that they didn't, they thought the brick color was, I don't know if he said too white or too cold.
It's too light.
Too light.
This is what was at Plan Commission.
And so we brought, they asked us to bring in a couple additional samples, to talk with staff about, so that we could get, get the final colors approved, or the final brick color approved.
What's the cement board that's going with the new color?
Uh, there, there's three cement board colors.
So we recommended this.
Do you know who made the comment about the brick, was it Dave?
No, it's Davis.
Davis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we brought in, today, with, with my name, or, um, Brian Van De Waal, and, it was kind of a, just a sense of...
Is that the goal, is it supposed to have a...
Originally, I believe, the Stan House made a comment about their colored brick versus, did they still, they no longer had that concern?
I think that their original comment was using a stone that was similar, and so we, um, don't have any stone, and we kind of went to like a tumble type, type brick that had a little bit more cream to it, um, versus the one that was really more kind of white. I, I mean, I, I think I liked the one that, that staff picked out today, so...
Okay, so, any more questions from Mark or Jacob? Okay, so the motion is to approve, as I said, for state for sale apartments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes, seven one. So the recommendations and proposals, this is the downtown plaza recommendation for public input process and request for proposals for landscape and architectural services, and I think the, this is to be deferred, right?
I think motion to defer, second.
Okay, and this is because all the paperwork isn't ready yet, so...
That'd be better.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, seven one. Resolution, twenty eighteen dash zero one, adopting certain equipment rates per contractor services and ordinance violation assessment.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Right.
Any discussion? So the motion is to approve the equipment rates, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, seven one. So the next one is twenty eighteen dash two, authorizing an application to the Board of Commission for Public Land State of Wisconsin for a loan of one point five million dollars from the trust funds of the State of Wisconsin for the Oak Ridge Tip Agreement.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? So the motion is to prove the loan from the trust fund, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion is passing, seven one. Next one is twenty eighteen dash zero three, approving a development financing agreement, issuance of a tax incremental revenue bond, and to establish a special redemption fund for the Cardinal Apartment Project.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. So the next one is twenty eighteen dash oh four, approving a development financing agreement, issuance of a tax incremental revenue bond, and to establish a special redemption fund for the Chemex Project.
Blue approval is recommended by Finance, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes, the motion to...
Hello.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.